First of all, welcome to everybody that's here with us today and those who may be checking out online or via Zoom or however they're watching us this morning. It's great to have you here and happy October to everybody. I can't believe it's already October. That means things are just around the corner and I just, we've got to slow it down and enjoy life a little bit. But it's great to have you all here this morning and we are going to start with an invocation and then the pledge led by Commissioner Peters. The invocation is going to be from Elder Anthony Shelton. I had the privilege of meeting him and his wife from St. John Primitive Baptist Church. If you'll come on up to the podium and give us an invocation. Thank you.
Eternal Father, we say thank you. We thank you for this day that you've created, God, a day that we've never seen before and a day we'll probably never see again. God, we understand that this is a day that the Lord has made and, God, we promise to rejoice and to be glad in it. Now, God, as we gather today, God, we pray that you would be in the midst of everything that is said and everything that is done today. God, we understand that you have given us both spiritual as well as natural leaders and, God, every good leader comes from you. And as these leaders gather today, God, we pray for your wisdom, wisdom to make prudent and wise decisions, God. We, secondly, ask for guidance. Guide us past pitfalls that may come to divide anyone of the leaders or even their constituents. And lastly, oh, God, we ask for honor. God, we pray that you would allow them to perform their duties honorably and with integrity. God, we thank you for the meeting. We thank you for the individuals who will be coming in to speak and, God, as they discuss, God, we ask that you would give them wisdom to solve problems and challenges. This we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Elder Shelton, thank you so much for that, those nice words to get us started today and thank you and your wife for being here this morning. It's just so good to see you. We have a couple of presentations this morning and I'm going to come up to the podium and do them. From there, we'll be talking about domestic violence Awareness Month. We'll talk about some national community planning proclamation and then finally an employee recognition for a person that works for us, obviously, and his family's here this morning. So excited to do that as well. So bear with me. All right. The first proclamation this morning for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I think, is probably the one that always jumps out at all of us as to really, probably one of the more important ones, most important ones that we do, which is, you know, groups that provide protection for our families, for the, for mostly women, but for families that are seeking safety for whatever reason, usually happening from within their own households. I just, I'm just so touched by the message and the mission that these groups have and I just really am so happy that they're here this morning. So I'm going to ask Lariana Forsythe, the CEO of Community Action Stops Abuse, also known as CASA, to all, to all of us, and Kirk Smith, President and CEO of Hope Villages of America, to come up here, please. I'm going to just read a proclamation here. If you guys want to just stand over here and then we'll take a couple of pictures and then I'll turn the microphone over to each of you. Domestic violence can be defined as a pattern of behavior used to establish power and control over another person through fear and intimidation, often including a threat or use of physical violence. The problems of domestic violence are not confined to any one group of people, but affect people across all economic status, race, and ethnicity, sexual orientation, culture, and society. The crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. The impact of domestic violence is far ranging, directly affecting women, children, men, and society as a whole. CASA is the official domestic violence center for Pinellas County and has provided lifesaving services to women, children, and men living with domestic violence for over 40 years. Their mission is to challenge the societal acceptance of all forms of domestic violence. CASA stands up to silence through advocacy, prevention, intervention, and support services. Hope Villages of America has been serving the community for more than 50 years by addressing hunger, housing, and abuse. Their mission is to provide hope restoration with dignity to those in need through innovative programs and services. As one of its division, Hope Villages operates a certified domestic violence center which provides prevention, intervention, and follow-up services through their outreach center and emergency safe house. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners, that the month of October 2021 be recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you so much for both of you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, everyone. You know, we are really grateful for what we're able to do each and every day. And one of the things I say all the time, there really is no finish line for our work. You know, we, we have to count the small victories and be excited about the small victories that we can win one at a time. But the reality is, is as soon as you help one family, there's another in need. And so it's really a privilege and honor to be in a position of strength to help so many people. And lastly, I'll say this, there's only two types of people walking this earth, those in need and those in the position to meet that need. And we thank God every day that we're in a position to meet the needs each and every day and it would not happen without your support in this community and we'll continue to work hard and fight against all types of abuse until it's completely eradicated and destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing the importance of the work we do for survivors of domestic violence. I passed around a little handout that talks a little bit about CASA's work in the community. Not only do we operate one of the largest domestic violence shelters in the state of Florida, you can see our comprehensive programs, offering injunction for protection, free legal services for survivors, all sorts of housing options for survivors. The depth and breadth of the services that we offer are meant to really help survivors move forward in their lives other than just providing shelters. So I hope you take a look at that information. I know some of you are joining us on Thursday for our peace celebration. If I haven't heard from you and you'd like to join, please let me know. Karen knows how to reach me. Thank you all so much. Appreciate the support.
All right. Our second proclamation is for National Community Planning. We obviously do a lot here and most of our companies around our communities do it and clearly a lot of our government groups do it and we do it as well. National Community Planning Month, I'd like to ask Evan Johnson. He's our Planning Division Manager and Corey Gray, Planner, both with Housing and Community Development, to come up here and join me, please.
Wow.
We planned for this.
That's great. The, let me just read this proclamation. Change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, and rural areas and other places. Community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. Community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. Inclusive community planning efforts help advance county priorities, including homes for Pinellas, health in all policies, Safe Street Pinellas, economic development, and sustainability and resiliency. The full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. The month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of the Board of County Commissioners, local planning agency, Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Historic Preservation Board, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and experience to the improvement of Pinellas County. We recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Pinellas County and extend our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to public service by those professionals. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that October 21st be recognized as National Community Planning Month. Just wanted to thank you all for your continued support of the good work that we're doing. We look forward to the coming year. We've got a lot of exciting projects and look forward to continuing to engage with the community and bringing good plans that are inclusive and supported by your initiatives. So thank you very much and... All right. It's always fun to recognize our employees and today is no exception and, and also when they get, they bring their families with them. So it's just great to have you all. So all of you, come on up, please. I'd love to have you up here as we introduce you. Pinellas County employees work behind the scenes every day to keep people safe and take care of the environment, strengthen our economy, and provide first-class services to our community. Our employee appreciation program is just one way that we thank individuals or teams that have done outstanding work. And today, we want to recognize an employee from Utilities. Great to have you here. Every day, Carlos Saron helps Pinellas County Utilities provide water and sewer to services, water and sewer services to thousands of customers across the county. As we're about to see, he is also a tremendous asset to his department and his coworkers. So it's so good to have you and your family here this morning. And we're going to have a video right now and watch what Carlos does every day.
My name is Carlos Saron. I'm a utility specialist four and I work for Pinellas County. We do everything, leaks, new installations, meters, hydrants, and a lot of emergency calls.
I've known Carlos for 20 years. He's a really integral leader. He's, he's safety conscious. He's very efficient. He's very high on quality with the work that he does.
It feels good when you have your team who works with you all the time. It's not just me, it's my team doing all the work together. I don't think the customers, they know what we do till they see it. Helping the customer, it feels good helping them, especially when they don't have no water. So when you go over there and the customer is happy to see you, you feel good.
Carlos is a very skilled technician. He's learned all the different brands and manufacturers of hydrants we have in Pinellas County and he's learned how to repair them without replacing them. That's huge. Carlos has been involved in a lot of large water main repairs that we've done. When you're fixing the water mains, you have to isolate the leak if it's broken. Carlos will go out and he'll leave the water on till the very last minute and he has to do that repair. Then he shuts the water, he makes the repair, and he gets the water back in as quickly as possible. Things like that are really integral in the, in the utilities business because you don't want to inconvenience your customers.
A lot of time, I want to make the customer happy and by me going to see the customer and talking to them, I feel good. And when they are happy, we're all happy. My name is Carlos and I am Pinellas County.
And Carlos mentioned team at, at work and clearly that's an awesome team that works together, but he has a good team at home as well and you can't, you can't do any of this without that. So I want to give you this employee recognition for outstanding service and team support to Carlos Saron.
I'm with the county 28 years plus and we went through storms, pandemic, layoffs. We still here. We work seven, 24/7 and this is a great place to work. Thank you.
All right. Well, that was, that was, that was fun having the family here. All right. We're going to get right into public hearings and first, we're going to do things under our countywide planning authority. And the first case is case number CW 2110 and I'll go to Kat, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number four is case number CW 21-10. This is a proposal by Pinellas County to amend the countywide plan map from residential low to residential high regarding 1.14 acres more or less located on the western terminus of 20th Terrace Southwest, approximately 300 feet west of Seminole Boulevard. The public hearing was properly advertised and affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received and the matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
Okay. Thank you, Kat. Are there any questions from the Commission? We do have, did you have something, Barry? Okay. We do have one, one speaker that wanted to speak this morning. So I'm going to go ahead and ask James Overholt to come on up and just state your name and address and you'll have three minutes, James. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is James Overholt, 1456 Monte Carlo Drive. That's in Clearwater. Here on behalf of the landowner from Tampa Civil Design, we thank you guys for your consideration of the project and that was really it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Sorry about the name. Messed that up. Okay. Any, any questions? Any preference for a presentation or do I have a motion? Please. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Flowers. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 25, case number CW 2111. Kat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number five is case number CW 21-11. This is a proposal by Pinellas County to amend the countywide plan map from residential low medium to retail and services regarding .69 acre more or less located at 811946 Avenue North. The public hearing was properly advertised and an affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received and the matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
Thank you, Kat. Any questions by the Commissioners? I do have one public comment. Chad Jackson, if you'll come on up, please, and state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. Welcome, Chad.
Thank you. Chad Jackson, 15, 13401 Rick and Backer Parkway, Fort Myers, Florida. Just want to thank you and looking forward to moving here.
Great. Welcome. All right. Any, any other questions? And if I don't see an interest in a presentation, do I have a motion, please? A motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item six, case number CW 2112. Kat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number six is case number CW 21-12. This is a proposal by Pinellas County to amend the countywide plan map from retail and services to residential low medium regarding .65 acre more or less located at 1201 Gooden Crossing. The public hearing was properly advertised and affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received and the matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
All right. Thanks, Kat. Any questions by the Commission? I have no public comments up here either. So unless I have a preference for a presentation, I need a motion. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now we move on to, we're now acting as the Board of County Commissioners as opposed to the countywide planning authority. Move on to item seven, ordinance amending part three of the Pinellas County Code, Land and Development Code. Kat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just said, the agenda item number seven is a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance to amend part three of the Pinellas County Code, Land Development Code, Chapter 158 regarding floodplain management. This provides for the basis of all development that is wholly or partially in a flood hazard area. The public hearing was properly advertised and affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you. And I don't have any comments. Barry?
Well, I think the presentation was provided last Thursday. So I'm pending any questions. Lisa and Kelly are both here.
Okay. Any...
Hey, Mr. Chair. I understand that we may have, in addition to agenda item nine...
I understand that we may have, in addition to Agenda item nine, a modification of the language for this ordinance as well.
Okay.
And this is a recommendation from staff that I understand is based upon some comments received from the state of Florida.
For item, this is item seven.
And we will have another one on Agenda item nine.
Good morning. The one thing that was...
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lisa Foster, floodplain administrator, Pinellas County. The one item that is different on Catherine's copy is there is a definition that was struck out in the copy you received that should not have been struck out, so it will remain in the code. That was for existing manufactured home park. It should remain in there.
Okay. Okay. Any questions about that? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Seeing no questions, and we had the presentation, any motion for approval, please? Commissioner Gerard on the motion, Commissioner Flowers on the second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item eight.
And, Mr. Chair, since this is a companion item and it's a regular item, I'm going to turn it over to the county administrator for Agenda item number eight.
This is a companion item to item number seven, so it just falls under, it's not a public hearing item.
Okay. Any questions on item number eight? Has to do with the Pinellas County Construction Licensing Board to approve local technical amendments to the Florida Building Code pertaining to flood management and flood damage prevention. Commissioner Flowers. Do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner. Peter, say a little bit more.
Oh, okay. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Peter, second by Commissioner Flowers. Commissioner Flowers, you're at the floor.
When we have changes like this that will certainly affect contractors and developers where they're able to bill and not bill, do we have a process that assures that we're getting that information out to them so that maybe they have plans that are in place but haven't completed the whole process for approval, but then would fall under the new floodplain floodzone rules?
We do. I can ask Kelly or Lisa to come up and speak specifically to that. They've been working on this with, not just for us, and this affects us, but also with a lot of municipalities that are adopting these same standards.
Good morning again. Lisa Foster, floodplain administrator. Yes, to answer your question, everybody that has already put things in will continue on as it is. They've already been permitted, so they'll carry on. This new code would go into effect for anybody that applies for the permits afterwards. And we met with several stakeholder groups, too. I believe you received an email with the list of stakeholder groups that we met with in advance. And the Florida, just for clarification, the Florida Building Code Local Technical Amendments follow the floodplain ordinance. It's just to make sure that they're aligned.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. On item eight, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is a, Kat, go ahead and introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number nine is a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance adopting a revised stormwater manual, which is incorporated into the Pinellas County Land Development Code by Section 154-52. The public hearing was properly advertised, and an affidavit of publication has been received for filing, no correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Yeah, we had a presentation on this on Thursday as well, but Barry, I think I'd like to see that presentation here as well, so folks that are checking us out.
Okay. Kelly, come on up.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could add, while she's coming up, Brendan is passing out some of the modified language for this item. What I would like to note is that it does not change anything in the stormwater manual itself. One of the changes relates to the codification language in the actual ordinance, and another change is to address some conflicting language, but again, it does not change the stormwater manual itself.
Okay. Thank you. Morning, Kelly. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Kelly Levy, Director of Public Works. So I know there were several of you here last week that Susan Global Canning, our Stormwater Division Director, was here to provide an overview of these efforts. So I'm going to run through them, and hopefully, it's not too repetitive, but hits all those high points again. So our process was well over a year in the making and included all the internal staff that are involved in this process and reviewing submittals. We had a third-party engineering firm who really is not involved in development in Pinellas County as a set of third eyes, just to look at things very cleanly and, you know, without any prior conceptions about our code. And it was very helpful to hear from someone like that. And then, of course, we had the Development Committee, Community Advisory Committee, which has been in place now for almost two years and has been working with staff to look at not only our codes, but our processes and how we can make things more effective and efficient. So that review process took a little over a year, and we finalized those changes and then took it through what's called the Development Review Committee, who has to review all of the proposed code changes. That was in August, and they approved what we were bringing forward. It then went to the local planning authority in September and was approved unanimously, and then it is before you today for consideration. If approved, then we will move into implementation and monitoring, and I would like to point out that the Development Community Advisory Committee is going to have a kind of a smaller group that is going to be part of our monitoring strategy to see, not only did the code changes make sense, but are our processes and procedures working efficiently. So our real focus areas, again, came from internal. It came from the development community, and where do we really need to focus changes? And small site constraints was probably the biggest issue that came up, and I'll go into that a little bit more later. Staff level adjustments. A lot of times, codes are very prescriptive, but in the site plan review process, it makes sense for staff to be able to make modifications where it's suitable to do so. Some of the development community wanted additional design criteria to be part of our manual and asked for more tools, you know, to help implement those design criteria. We needed to ensure that we were interpreting every project consistently. There was, you know, some areas where that wasn't happening, and we've, you know, worked through that and made sure that everyone is applying the code in the exact same way. Affordable housing, obviously, the board has a big strategy in development and big conversations about that, so we want to make sure that the stormwater code is aligned to support that strategy. Regional stormwater has been a big conversation, both here and with the development community, so we wanted to make sure that our code was set up right so that as each regional facility came onboard, you know, those who wanted to take advantage of that could move right into it. And then, of course, is the process improvements that I mentioned. So as we were going through the code changes, one of the things that we wanted to make sure was that it was fully aligned with the county's strategic goals in mind. You know, one of the things, you know, there's a challenge for Pinellas County, and it's something that was discussed when we developed the surface water management program, is a significant amount of our development occurred before there was any stormwater. And therefore, we're kind of looking, we're trying to correct problems of the past. These are pictures actually from this summer, from developments that, again, were built, you know, before there was formal stormwater practices in place. And, you know, we want to make sure that as we're redeveloping, you know, that we can help mitigate some of this, and we can ensure that our communities are safe and that our communities are resilient. And just, you know, for the, on the left-hand side there with the car, I mean, that's an area of unincorporated Largo. And on the right is a mobile home park. So again, when I say, you know, affordable housing, we not only want to make sure that the units are beautiful and that people want to live there, but we also want to make sure that they're safe. Environmental stewardship, the image there on the right is, shows three jurisdictional areas, unincorporated in the gray, pink is Clearwater, and green is St. Petersburg, which comprise about 70% of the land area. The blue lines are all of our impaired waters. So what are impaired waters? It means that they don't meet standards. So most of Pinellas County's waters are considered Class III waterways, meaning they should be fishable and swimmable. And so local governments are tasked with, you know, when a water is not meeting those standards, finding a way, doing projects and programs to mitigate that, to improve the water quality. And that's, you know, implemented through our MPDS permit, our stormwater permit. That can be accomplished through what's called a total maximum daily load, or TMDL, implementation plan, where we specifically have regulations from the state. They're like, "Pinellas County, you must reduce nitrogen by 50% in Joe's Creek." And it's written into our permit like that. So that's an implementation plan that we have to go through. Or we also have what's called reasonable assurance plans, and we have one of those that covers all of Tampa Bay that we're party to, and we also have one for Lake Seminole. And these are mechanisms that we use to implement projects and programs that will effectively improve water quality. And so when we looked, when we were looking at, you know, all of this, one of the requests was that we just mirror SWIFTMUD with regard to our impervious area exemptions. That's quite challenging, as, you know, SWIFTMUD has written into Florida statutes or Florida Administrative Code, excuse me, 4,000 square feet for area subject to traffic or vehicular traffic, and 9,000 square feet for anything else. The Southwest Water and Water Management District covers 16 counties. It's a huge area of which the overwhelming majority is very rural. So it may not be as big of a deal in Hernando or Citrus, but it is a big deal in Tampa. It's a big deal here, and it's a big deal in other areas where we have, already have a lot of impervious. Our code prior to the stormwater manual had 3,000 square feet. The manual carried that recommendation forward for those reasons, because the more impervious we add, the more we exacerbate our service level goals with regard to flood control. But we're also continuing to add more pollutants because it's not treated. But we also recognize there needs to be some exemption. Small improvements to a property that enhance the value of that property, enhance a business's ability to function, you know, we do need to offer some flexibility there. So we recommended to keep it the same. It's very consistent regionally. If you add in Largo, who has a similar code provision, we're at 75% of the county being at a similar level. So we recommended to keep it that way, and in discussions with the Water Management District, they also supported that. They said that is why places like Pinellas and Tampa and St. Pete all have their own code, because you can't compare yourself to Hernando, you can't compare yourself to Polk. It's just, it's very different. Oh, sure.
So this map here, am I not understanding correctly, or, to me, this is very problematic. All of these blue lines that I heard you say were not up to where they should be, is that correct?
Correct. And that is, all of those water bodies outlined in blue are on the state's what they call impaired waters list. It may also already have what's called a total maximum daily load, and that is actually a law. These reductions are adopted by law by the state of Florida, and we're given a time period to which, to address it.
And so what's the time period when these blue lines are not expected to be there any longer?
It's quite a ways out.
That's what I was afraid you were going to say. So given our proximity, the... I just don't know what to say. I mean, this...
Well, I want to, you know, highlight the positive things because we, as a community, have done some amazing positive things. We adopted, you know, we were so bold in adopting our fertilizer ordinance, and I will hold that up in my career as one of the best things we have ever done for water quality in this county. And yeah, in 2017, you know, we put our, we stepped out forward and said, you know, green infrastructure is the wave of the future. Doesn't mean that it doesn't need to change a little bit in how we implement it, how we, you know, structure things, but it's still a tool in the toolbox. And I can tell you that Hillsborough County is now moving in that direction. I mean, everybody's now starting to look towards this direction. The state is relooking at their laws because they, so back in, you know, 2010, you know, you look at a code that's been in place since 1985, state law, and there's a presumption of compliance in there. If you design your stormwater system to this way, it's going to achieve X, Y, and Z. Nobody ever challenged the presumption. Nobody ever said, "Is it right or is it wrong?" Well, finally, the state said, you know, it's been over 20 years, and impaired waters are just exploding, so this doesn't make sense, because if it was working, we shouldn't be seeing all these waterways across the state of Florida not meeting standards. So they set out to determine, is it true? That's their hypothesis. So multi-year study across the entire state, and they found that the presumption was false. And so they had moved forward with what was called a statewide stormwater rule to update those standards. It was shelved, but now it's been brought back. And so there is a technical advisory committee that is re-reviewing that and looking at a path forward, because the state had a, you may have heard of it, a Harmful Algal Task Force, Harmful Algal Bloom Task Force, and they came up with, I think, 10 things that really needed to be addressed, and stormwater was one of them. So the state is even looking at their rules and what makes sense, because this is a problem, not just in Pinellas, it's a problem everywhere. And so we really do need to find a way to address it. But I do want to say that, I mean, I think, you know, we, as a county, have done some wonderful things, and we are seeing water quality improvements, it's just, they're just not there yet.
And I hear that, and I'm very grateful for it. My concern, Kelly, is, you know, everything moves at a snail's pace, but that doesn't mean that everything out of our control is moving at a snail's pace. And what really worries me is the fact that we know that our rainstorms are heavier and more frequent than ever before, which just exacerbates all of this. We know that we are at great risk of any major storm hitting our coast and inundating us with water. And it, to me, it's just a ticking time bomb waiting to explode. And so I guess my question here is, is there anything else that we could be doing to raise awareness, instill some kind of sense of urgency into getting this up to speed in a faster, more responsible way?
I think a lot will. I mean, I realize, you know, waiting for the state, it may not even occur in 2022. You know, the TAC is meeting through the end of, right now, we're, it's still scheduled through the end of the calendar year. Then they've got to go into rulemaking, and then there's public comment. And, you know, so it may be a full another year before the state, you know, moves that needle. And for a lot of people, that is, for a lot of communities, that's really the mechanism in which to, you know, move the needle in some areas. Pinellas is not one of them. We have, you know, a lot of really great programs, Clearwater and St. Petersburg and, you know, Largo, you know, all have very strong stormwater programs, and we are making a difference collectively. But this, but we're part of a bigger picture here, and, you know, the state needs to be part of that solution. So we'll see what they come up with as far as stormwater, because a lot of small communities depend on them. You know, we have small communities in Pinellas that depend on them, Safety Harbor and Pinellas Park, Cana City, you know, they don't have permitting programs, so they are wholly reliant on getting their developer comes in, "I have my permit from the state." And we know, we know that the design criteria is flawed. We know it from day one. But they don't have the means to have a program to review their development. So we do know that, you know, that's going on, and until the state implements their changes, we're not going to see that needle move. But we are moving the needle, and there are communities around the state that are doing the same thing. Tallahassee, Jacksonville, Olatchua County, Broward, there are numerous counties all across the state and cities, you know, especially urban cities, that are, you know, adopting codes that reflect the challenge of their community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kelly, just real quick. The, some of the things that you were talking about, I'm really glad that we're having that, you called it the Development Community Advisory Committee kind of weigh in, because I think that's an important piece. You know, I kind of see that we have made some progress, and I see a completely developed county that is in the process of redeveloping. So, and a lot of our county was built out before there was, as you said earlier, any of the stormwater regulations. So we have some properties that have zero pervious area, that when, with redevelopment, you have the... you have the opportunity to improve a situation. And I, I see it all over the place. And, and so I, I think there's a, there's, to me, I think it's optimism, optimism in the air as, as far as some of the progress we've made, but really the redevelopment that's going to go on, if we're going to try to encourage good redevelopment, I, I think to have that outside group at our side, looking at these, I think is really critically important so that we are doing things the right way, keeping that balance. Because it is a balance of, but all along, I think even that balance is going to bring improvements. So I'm, I'm encouraged by what we're doing and I keep up the good work. So go ahead with the...
Thank you. All right. So again, I, I mentioned, you know, affordable housing. And we want, you know, old, you know, 1960s, 1970s mobile home park, mobile home units to be replaced with one that is to current wind standards that, you know, gosh, just look at the appearance of, of the one at the top on the left and then on the right. You know, it just, it brings a completely different feel to a community when you have a new home there. So we do want to encourage that. And this would allow them to just simply replace in kind, just like a single-family home. An old single-family home comes down, a new one goes up, there's no stormwater criteria on that. But also this, these stormwater requirements apply to, to public infrastructure as well. And so I just want to take a little section to second to say that on the 21st of this month, you're going to have some project updates from Public Works. And one of those is the Crystal Beach Stormwater Project. And so you're going to see where the county is actually utilizing this with the community's support to improve their stormwater facilities in Crystal Beach. And that'll be a, be a wonderful, wonderful project and, and it has been working side by side with the community there. But this one on the bottom is one that I drive by every single day on my way home. And, you know, there used to be a very dilapidated mobile home park on, on Rosary Road there just off of Clearwater Largo Road. And I would drive home there on my way home and just cringe. It just, it was just screaming for, you know, how can we help this community? So you look at what the city of Largo did with adding a multipurpose trail there on the south side of the road, sidewalk on the north side, adding the driveway aprons, but also using bio swales right there in the right of way to treat the stormwater, provide a more modern stormwater system. And the mobile home park went away and now there's, you know, apartment complex there that has affordable housing. It just is an example of how, when you compare public infrastructure improvements with private, how it can just revitalize a community. And that's really important. And last but definitely not least is how we provide that first-class service to both the public and, and the applicant coming in the door. And that is, you know, you've heard this before, but we're using a project management approach to delivering the review process. It allows for, you know, consistent practices and procedures so both the applicant and the reviewers understand, you know, their role. The project managers are a critical component of this. I can't, you know, I can't even tell you how nice it has been having John Headache and his team already working on certain projects. They are the point of contact and allows the technical staff to do their work while the applicant has only one person to contact. You don't need to call around and ask different staff, different questions, you know, to move their project forward. And I think that's really important. Acela has allowed for more transparency for the public and the applicants so they can see where their project is in the process. Development is, is on timing, timing and money. So this allows the applicant to know where their project is in those, in the, in the queue, allows them to make decisions. And it makes our process, our processes become more efficient and effective in the way we do this. So it's a, it's both a public-private partnership, it really is, because this won't work without the private side doing their part and us doing our part.
Kelly, your group that you have together that was kind of walking through this with you, is there any one or two things that may have jumped out from there, from that group that we're not bringing forward, maybe that we need to be kind of keeping an eye out for, or is there anything that you can think of?
The only thing that was, you know, that we, you know, didn't agree on was the increasing the impervious area, you know, to match SWIFT MUD. But we have a very valid technical reason to do so. It wasn't a make or break. It was something they asked us to consider and we explained why we, why we didn't recommend it. They recommended, I'll, I'll be talking about one of the, one of the recommendations they did make, which is in there a little bit, in a little bit. But really, you know, the thing that we kept hearing over and over and over again was time, you know, time, 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 time is money. We got to get our projects in the door and out the door. And, you know, that is where the project management process came in because it is so, you know, it, it tracks everything. And I, and I have to say, even though we aren't fully implemented with the project management process, we're just kind of kicking it off, we do, all do meet with the Strategic Performance Management Group to review the performance measures with regard to our timeliness. And there has been a steady improvement in that in the past year. So it's, it's really good to see.
Yeah, well, sometime it would be interesting to see, you know, projects, you know, side by side with, you know, what it might look like with, like the SWIFT MUD versus with ours, you know, how, what that subtle, and from our perspective, it might be subtle. From theirs, it may not be as subtle, just so that we fully understand that.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges with, you know, the state is that you only have two tools in the toolbox. You can either have a dry pond or a wet pond. With ours, you could end up with no pond, depending on the type of tools you want to use. So it really does open up the opportunities for a site, you know, to have more developable area and not, you know, put a stormwater pond in the back that never gets maintained and isn't pretty. And then we get complaints about it. So, you know, honestly, I think there are 15 or 16 different stormwater tools in our manual versus two at the state level. So...
Good. Thank you.
The, I, I mentioned that small sites were a big complaint. And it was because, you know, our administrative adjustments that we can make, the threshold was one acre in a, in the 2017 version. Fast forward, we learned that our average site plan is actually two acres. So we just increased that threshold to two. So we just, again, opened up the flexibility. We talked about, you know, these, you know, staff will see a project and I, right now, administrative adjustments at this level have to come to me. So I'm seeing projects come in and, and they're like really close and I'm just signing off, get them moving, get them moving. The staff should be able to do that. That shouldn't have to come to me. That should be able to, the, the site plan review staff right there on site should be able to, you know, this is a really good project, the return on investment to make them redesign, this is ridiculous, move them on. So I, I really, really like that part. The design criterion tools, one of the development community members, you know, wanted us to model a practice after what they have in Hillsborough. Percolation is very difficult in Pinellas, as you can imagine. Our groundwater table's very, very high and our soils are not great in some areas. But there are some areas on the ridge, you know, where it may work perfectly fine. So we want to make sure that that's there and a tool in the toolbox that can be considered. The other thing is we, again, I mentioned, we do have like 15 or 16 different designed, you know, stormwater designs that you can pick and choose from. Maybe it's a bio swell, maybe it's a vault, maybe it's pervious pavement, it's all these different things and combined together. So we produce design templates for all of these that can be pulled into their, their project and customized to meet their, their site-specific needs. The state, the state has a, a model. It's free to use, it's maintained. I do mention that in the, in the, in the 2017 version of the code, that model was required. Some folks don't want to use it, so we said, fine. You know, you can use any alternative you want that, that, you know, provides the same information. So we just opened that up. But the state did modify their model to allow for a 10% water quality credit if you're, if you have a wet detention system, if you install a latoral shelf. And that, that picture there of the pond with the plantings around the shelf, around the edge, that's a latoral shelf. So we just incorporated that right into the manual. Again, I mentioned just making sure that the language is very clear to both the applicants and the staff so that we're, our interpretation is there's no surprises. Affordable housing, that one-for-one replacement. And again, our, our project management approach, which I honestly believe is, is really going to be the, just, it's just the, the cherry on top of the sundae. It really is going to help this process. I'm really, I'm really excited to, to see the work that they're doing on that. And that is it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Kelly? Yes, Commissioner Long?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment because I remember, I think Commissioner Gerard will too, because when we were, a year ago, before the pandemic in Indianapolis, they had a lot of that throughout the city. And it just aesthetically made everything look so clean and so, I don't know, just environmentally beautiful, right in the middle of downtown. It was fabulous.
You know, we were just at the ICMA conference in Portland and I hate to acknowledge this because I think Barry's going to make fun of me, but I was walking in downtown Portland and they had the same thing. And I was, I took pictures for all the staff. It was, I mean, yeah.
It makes such a difference, truly.
He's laughing. She's walking around Portland taking pictures of stormwater.
But you get a lot of neat ideas, you know, from, from going to places like that who have managed to implement those things. And it, it just really makes a difference. And it's a good thing at the same time. So thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Kelly. And I, you know, I think Barry, when he came here, he created these assistant to the county administrator positions, which I think have been great and awesome. And they keep evolving and getting better and better. And I think this process of bringing more flexibility to staff on some of the stormwater calls and having a project management team to help folks get through it. I mean, I know, like you say, we're just, you know, rolling it out, I think is, is just really a good step forward for not only our businesses, which clearly that's important, but also for our residents who are coming through. And it looks like Greek when they start pulling, you know, going through this process to be able to have the attitude and the culture to change, to help instead of saying no. Sometimes it is no, but, you know, at the other, trying to find reasons to make things happen, I think is just a great change. So I just wanted to make that comment and a call out on that. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Flowers?
Hi, good morning. Great presentation and thank you for the information. When you are looking at impervious surfaces and those developers that are coming in, and I know that there are certain, there's a ratio of parking spaces you have to have to certain construction projects and landscaping. Do you give any additional bonus points for those companies who may want to use more impervious materials for percolation, which that helps us in general rather than just so much? I mean, I know we have to have parking, but then sometimes it creates so much concrete, so much asphalt until certainly that increases the temperature. And when we're looking at sustainability and resiliency efforts, I think using those types of materials would certainly, you know, help us overall in that way, so.
Yes, you can double dip, if you will. You, uh, anybody here been to Rumba, the restaurant? Okay. They're way ahead of their time. Next time you're there, take a look at their stormwater pond. If you noticed, it's in between the parking spaces, right? There's, I think parking lots are like such a missed opportunity. Those islands that are up, how many of the trees survive, the planting survive? They don't. But when you invert them down, you're creating stormwater storage, you're creating treatment, and it's a great place to put in your landscaping. So you do something like that, you'll notice if you go to Rumba, there are trees planted in there. And so yes, if you, when you plant, install your landscaping and some of your trees, you can count that towards your landscaping requirement within the stormwater. This, I'll give you another one too. The city of Largo's rec center on Highland. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Flowers. Anything else, if anybody? Okay, thanks, Kelly.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I do just want to remind that there are some recommended changes to the ordinance as it appeared in your backup agenda. Brendan Macacy from my office is here and can answer questions. But the changes are to the codification section of the ordinance to clarify those portions that should be included in the land development code. And then a change in section 138-237 to remove an inconsistency.
Okay. Any questions? They may want to bring Brendan up or are we okay? Okay, thanks Brendan. Anyway, I think we're good. Do I have a motion on this item, please? Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 10.
Mr. Chair, agenda item number 10 is the first public hearing to consider a proposed resolution approving the use of a non-ad valorem special assessment for the restoration of Hidden Cove Number Two Oak Street retention pond in unincorporated Clearwater. The public hearing was properly advertised and affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received. A second public hearing will take place prior to the beginning of fiscal year 2023. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, thank you. Anything from, Barry, anything from your perspective on that?
No, this is, you'll see down there, they're going to bring back the actual piece that does the assessment, but this is the first start of that process. It's a 10-year process. It was actually a kind of a compromise. They had to work with the property owners because they, they actually have a whole area, but only two people under the deed are, are responsible for that pond. So it was a, it was a very good compromise.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Seal.
So I'm quite familiar with this one. There, I believe it is benefiting 13 other homes, so they're not participating at all?
No. Kelly, you want to come up and explain? They, they looked at that, but again, they would have to be willing participants and it would have to be a modification to the original setup. And they were not, they were not willing to do that, is my understanding.
Yes, unfortunately, you know, this is a very old subdivision. For, for those that aren't, aren't familiar with it, in this particular subdivision, the stormwater pond was placed on the property, the actual property of two homeowners. There's no homeowners association and there's, so the pond is completely in ownership of these two parcel owners, even though it does support the rest of the subdivision. And there was no legal means for us to assess the rest of the people because they don't own the property. And so it was, it was a very challenging facility to deal with because it was causing neighborhood flooding and we were getting a lot of complaints, especially during the rainy season. So we did need to get it resolved, but one of the ways we were able to do that was to partner with the two property owners in the Adopt a Pond program. And, and that was a benefit.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do I have a motion, please? Commissioner Flowers on the motion, Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, we move on to our citizens to be heard and it looks like we have about four this morning. And we'll start with Andrew Strong. Come forward, introduce yourself and your address and give us your address and then...
Hello.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then next up will be David Ballard Geddes Jr. Come up, David, you know the routine, you have three minutes. Introduce yourself.
Thank you, sir. David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Article 3, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution states that "the judicial power shall extend to all cases in law and equity arising as fact under this Constitution and that such judicial powers shall affect all cases of admiralty, ambassadors, ministers, and their consuls of such, and shall in effect extend to all controversies between two or more states, to citizens of the same state claiming lands under grants of different states, to include foreign states in controversy of law and in equity to which the United States shall be a party seen as a controversy between a maritime jurisdiction and a court of original jurisdiction, and that all such cases shall be recognized in criminal trial." Article 3, Section 2 recognizes "a predispositioned controversy of jurisdiction in the state implicating both jurisdiction and state as criminal in fact. The criminal aspect is substantiated constitutionally under the 14th Amendment, seen as its jurisdiction, exploiting the substantive meaning of such jurisdiction through the immaterial use of a pronoun used as a direct object. Its jurisdiction is substantiated under the 14th Amendment as a water jurisdiction." here to take the liberty, property, and life of the Gentiles as in fact Article I, Section 10 recognizes such maritime jurisdiction as a ship of war," thus revealing this Hamilton's first Constitution to be a letter of marquee, a bill of attainder, a reprisal seen as a long train of usurpations as written in the Declaration, self-implicating itself as being abusive, constitutionally criminalizing both the state and its jurisdiction criminally as revealed in Article III, Section 2. The judicial powers affecting such controversies of the state and its jurisdiction in such state under such Constitution shall be charged as a high-seas criminal activity." Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, Julie Vane. Come on, Julie, give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Can I touch this?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Vane. I live in Estates Terrace in Seminole, and I am here to represent the citizens of the county in regard to term limits. I am very disappointed that you all voted to not put term limits on the referendum for vote next year by the citizens. I'm sorry, you shook your head, no.
No, no.
I misunderstood that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we were having an opening discussion.
Opening discussion.
And we'll be bringing it back for further discussion.
Okay.
So it hasn't, nothing has happened one way or the other.
Well, what I want to let you know, that elected officials, that the citizens of this county voted over 20 years ago to have term limits, and it was overturned because of a legal technicality having to do with constitutional officers. The citizens voted unanimously to have term limits for these seats that you all are sitting in, and Ms. Seal, you've been there 22 years. You really should not be there anymore. Overwhelmingly, the citizens of this country are for term limits, are for a turnover in office. Elections are not good enough. We've seen the power base is too strong with lobbyists and big dollar contributions. The citizens' voices are not being heard. We are being held down. Our freedoms are being denied. The last year of the pandemic with mask mandates and everything else that has gone on with shutting down businesses in this community is wrong. If you all don't bring it up, we will, and we can, and we have the power. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. And that's all I have, nothing else? Okay, so we have one person online. Kat, if you can get that person, please, thank you.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. We do have Ms. Aidan Barnes. Ms. Barnes, your hand is already raised in the Zoom application, so once you're muted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, you will have three minutes, ma'am.
Hi there, my name is Aidan Barnes, A-D-E-N. My address is 10240 127th Ave. in Largo. There are a few topics I'd like to touch on, including term limits. Thank you so much for the previous speaker. I appreciate you speaking today. But first, I'd like to discuss the recent property tax increase. In a 5-2 vote, Commissioner Eggers and Peters were the only ones who voted against this tax increase, and thank you for advocating for a rollback rate so you could at least keep our property taxes the same as last year. But unfortunately, the other five members of the board voted for a staggering $30 million tax increase. Pinellas already has some of the highest per median property taxes in the entire country. I'd like to point out that raising taxes doesn't just affect homeowners like me, but it also affects renters, and with the economy the way it is, rent is already skyrocketing. So why raise taxes now? Why raise taxes when Pinellas County already has millions of dollars in the reserves? Pinellas County has the lowest debt rate of any county across all of Florida, so this tax increase was unnecessary, and it's going to affect my property tax and yours for the next 12 years, to those who are listening. The reason given for raising taxes was for transportation, but there should have been ample money enough from penny for Pinellas for sidewalks repairs, maintenance, things like that. But as we know, this millions of dollars in penny money went to other projects instead, so that fund is depleted. But you guys could have used the American Rescue Act money. We have 189 million for that. I don't understand why that wasn't used, because it can be used for transportation. I looked up the details. And I want to point out that since 1996, there's only been one tax rollback, that's 25 years with only one tax cut. So, Pinellas residents, I'm going to go to the next point, which is term limits. I think if we had term limits, we wouldn't have tax increases every single year. We don't want unlimited numbers of terms for local politicians. Thank you, Commissioner Eggers and Peters, for talking about this and advocating for term limits last meeting. This should be up for a vote, so I'd like the Board to draft language and put this question on the ballot. The last and only time that term limits were put up for a vote, 70% of voters wanted term limits. It's a great way to bring new people into office. Incumbents do hold an advantage, especially with our current voting and election system in Pinellas, and I'd like to applaud the canvassing team from Defend Florida. You're doing great work. Thank you for uncovering fraudulent ballots right here in Pinellas County. I hope our 2020 election is audited so we can see who really won those seats. The last election was very close. One candidate for Commissioner lost by half a percentage point, and the other who ran on term limits only lost by about one percentage point. This illustrates that there are a lot of people in the public who want term limits.
Thank you.
So one more.
Yeah, thank you, Aidan. Okay, we are moving on to the consent agenda, and there, I'm sorry, Commissioner Seal, go ahead.
I just want to pull item 30 because I intend to vote against it.
Okay, okay, we'll pull item 30. Anything else that wants, that we need to pull? Okay, and then, as I usually do, I'm going to just go through and put the ones that are on here under consent that have dollar values attached to it. Under emergency management, there's a ratification of the county administrator's approval of the award of contract to CDR Health for vaccine, for COVID-19 vaccine point of dispensing, and that's a $9 million contract through April 1st. Under public works, a joint project agreement with City of Tarpon Springs and Klosterman Watershed Management Plan for $300,000, $300,000, of which $133,935 is for the county. Under that same public works, we have ranking of firms and agreements for requirements of continuing material testing and professional consulting services. That's $3 million a year over a five-year period, so it's about $12 million, $12 million total over five years, excuse me, that's for four different firms. Under utilities, award of bid to Metro Equipment Service for construction services pertaining to County Road 95, forced main relocation project for $728,000 and some change. And then, under human services, there are four items. One, ranking of firms in agreement with Aetna Life for Medicare Advantage Personnel Benefits, and I think, I just want to answer the questions, for 36-month contract for And my understanding is, Barry, those are fully, those are paid for by the retirees. I'll make sure I'm clear on how much of that $20 million, this is, again...
I'll ask Kimberly to come up, or Kimberly, to answer that.
I just didn't, I just want to make sure.
I know that, yeah, I know the answer, but I want to make sure.
Hi, Kimberly, welcome.
Good morning. The question was regarding voluntary benefits?
Yeah, this is under Medicare Advantage. Medicare Advantage Personnel Benefits, how much of the $20 million over the next 36 months is borne by the county, and how much is borne by our retirees? I guess that's retirees, right?
Okay.
This is item 27, Kimberly. So this is the ranking of firms for Aetna Life Insurance Company for the requirements of group Medicare Advantage personnel benefits.
Correct. And I'm giving you the look because the question, we have several different plans, and you have some folks who are grandfathered in, and so there's a difference in the percentage of what the county pays for different people.
Okay. So didn't that change like in 2011 or something like that?
2000, I believe it was 2011. Some folks are grandfathered in and some are not, and of course, those who are not are paying a higher percentage. And so to ferret out the exact number, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, so 20 million is what we pay out in total, and we get some of that reimbursed?
Absolutely.
By our, by our, and maybe you could send that information out to us later.
Be happy to.
Thank you. Thank you. And then under 28, and the ranking of firms with Cigna Health and Life Insurance for requirements of dental benefits, that administrative services is $2.43 million over, per year, over three years. I'm a little bit, I'm sorry to ask you back here. Kimberly, sorry, might as well stay close by because I just want to make sure I'm looking at the numbers right here. That's $2.4 million, annual amount of $2.4 million for a 36-month contract value of $12 million. So I was trying to understand real quickly why that's, annual amount's $2.4 million, and it's a three years, is it supposed to be five years?
This is, which contract are we speaking of, sir? Excuse me?
All right, this is the dental benefit?
The dental benefit is a five-year contract with two one-year renewals beyond that.
Perfect. That's, it says 36-month in here, and that's why the numbers didn't add up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. So that is a 60-month contract value. Under item 29, ranking of firms with Cigna Health for Group Medical, Employee Assistance and Managed Behavioral Health, and that is a $1.8 million for, again, I'm assuming that's five-year, not 36-month, for a contract value of $9 million. And then, so to that end, we'll hold off on 30 because we're pulling that. So with that said, do I have a motion for approval of the rest of the consent? Commissioner Long and Commissioner Gerard on the second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Commissioner Seal, you wanted to pull item 30, please.
Yes, I just simply want to vote against this. I personally have not been happy with Express Scripps, and I've heard from others as well.
Yeah, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At our previous meeting, Commissioner Seal did state she had had some issues, and I believe staff also stated they had received some complaints, and the representative that was here that day said she would kind of go back and address some of those things. I was wondering if that conversation actually occurred. Not to change what you're saying, Commissioner Seal, but I just know that they were going to try to address it. I wanted to know if in fact anything had been done, and if they had a chance to address the issues and concerns from our employees regarding the difficulty in accessing benefits. I know the young lady said that she's personally gotten involved a couple times, I'm appreciative, but that does bring concern when there seems to be a consistent issue, so much so that our staff is having to take time away to get involved.
Well, the one, and I ended up having a nice conversation with our staff about the medical plans, and I think they are going to have a person who we will be able to reach out and touch, which should be helpful. But nevertheless, I do not like the way Express Scripps manages their system at the end of the day, but having a person to call will be helpful.
Kimberly.
And thank you for the opportunity to address this. We did meet with Commissioner Seal, and I completely understand where she's coming from with some personal matters that she's attended to. Our staff has taken, on occasion, questions from other employees. We do continue, excuse me, to work with Express Scripps on each and every individual situation. It's my opinion, based on my experience across the bay and here, that the volume of questions that we've gotten are escalated issues that we've received about Express Scripps are no greater than any other prescription drug benefit plan. And Commissioner is absolutely right in having a person on site who will have access to all the information about claims and information about providers and personal information from employees to be able to assist them, in my opinion, will make all the difference in the world. And so we believe that the contract that's before you, that went through the purchasing process with an RFP, that the selection committee was made from a cross-functional team, they overwhelmingly selected Express Scripps for not only their plan and the providers that were available, but for their service as well.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Flowers. Any other questions for Kimberly on this item? Thank you, Kimberly. Motion by Commissioner Justice, second by, did you say that, Commissioner Long, or Commissioner Gerard, sorry about that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
And I just wanted, I didn't want to pull or make a, I just wanted to note, item number 17 is correspondence from the City of Dunedin regarding voluntary annexation, kind of an important piece of property there, just to take a look if you haven't noticed it. Item 17 is the City of Dunedin's annexation of the Jerry Lake property that we've been working on last year.
Okay, finished with consent, we're moving on to the regular agenda item, and the first one will be under County Administrator Departments, the airport itself. So Barry?
First item, item number 31, is an airline operating agreement with Sun Country Airlines for commercial air service. It's a five-year agreement.
Any questions for Barry? Commissioner Peters on the motion, second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 32.
This is an award of a bid for rental car concession services for St. Pete Clearwater International Airport for the four listed car companies below.
Commissioner Peters on the motion, Commissioner Gerard on the second. Any questions on this item? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 33.
This is an award of a bid to Evelyn Brothers for the purpose of replacing portal gates seven through 11 at the airport, and this is a small, certified small business enterprise.
Motion by Commissioner Peter, second by Commissioner Long. Any questions on that item? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving down under Convention and Visitors Bureau, item 34.
This is an amendment to the fiscal year '22 funding recommendations from the Tourism Development Council, including a waiver of the Elite Event Funding Program Guidelines, and you can see the categories below, but that the waiver had to do with St. Pete Fight Fest.
Any questions? Okay, I have a motion, please. Any questions? Any, do I have, yeah, Commissioner Seal.
Just a comment. I mean, this barely made the numbers to the next category, and was subject to a survey and so on, and I would just make sure that it performs this year in order to qualify for that increased subsidy, because this, it was 25,926 unique attendees, and our level is 25,000.
Yeah, there were several comments to that effect, so that we'll be watching that for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion, please? Commissioner Long on the motion. Did you say second, Commissioner Gerard? Second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 35, under County Administrator.
This is a resolution designating the airport director into the senior management class for FRS.
I have a motion for approval, and a second by Commissioner Peters. Commissioner Seal.
I'm just curious, where did this come from? Did this come from a compensation study? Did this come from, because right now it is just the county administrator and four assistant county administrators that are in this classification. So I just don't want to start some precedent where we are escalating people into this class.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I actually should have briefed you individually on this before. This actually came as a result of a discussion with Tom back right before the pandemic, I mean, literally right when it was occurring, and he's had, he's seen some other opportunities, and we looked at what the other airport directors in that type of position make, and it's significant, and it's significantly more even than what we're paying. Obviously, he's been here a very long time, and he's very happy. He just asked for that as a consideration. So when we looked, it was very common for these So when we looked, it was very common for these specialized positions, either of higher level classifications, be in the senior management class. And so it kind of got put on hold because we got busy with everything else. And, and as we looked at this back, you saw some of the other constitutionals and others have probably more broad application of that. We're not looking to increase the application. We thought in this specialized for somebody that's been with us a long time and runs a senior, you know, a major airport, it was a reasonable request. And so we looked at it and put it on for your consideration.
Do we know how long it's planning before he does retire?
Oh, he's got a while, but I didn't ask that question.
And then not to mention the salary, but how does his salary compare to the other, other folks in the, in the senior classification? Is it about par to the other assistant county administrators?
It's actually, it's some above, some below. But for an airport director, I mean, you know, it's like hiring a doctor, I can't do that job, so it's kind of not comparable. But he, for other regional airports, his compensation's probably a little lower, which was one of the items that highlighted this.
Thank you, Commissioner Seal. Commissioner Gerard?
I just wonder who else is in the category that he's in right now?
You mean, airport director?
No.
21.
Employment level, I mean, who, what?
Oh, in, in that classification. Joe, do you remember, or Kevin, do you remember?
I haven't.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really recall.
Commissioner Seal has it.
It's the county administrator and four assistant county administrators, which is Jill, Kevin, Tom and Lourdes.
No, I mean the one he's in now.
You're looking at the, you mean the, the pay range?
No, no, not necessarily, just the classification because.
Senior management service class.
If we do this for one.
That's what I was worried about.
We're no doubt going to get requests from others, so.
Well, we could have requests for others, but I'm, but I was really looking, this, this is a specialized position. And so, you know, and I know it was brought up, you know, the other day, that you, somebody brought up, you know, about CBB. And so, you know, potentially could, we could look at that, but, you know, Steve is new into his job, you know, and this is something I think Tom, over the 20 years, has earned. And so that's the reason we wanted to recognize that. But it's not something that we're looking to apply to all directors or expand this out.
I just want to note that it is a significant difference. A regular FRS is 10.74% and the senior classification is 29.07%. So it's a pretty good.
So I appreciate Commissioner Seal's comments as always. I guess I would be very interested, not now, Barry, but I can think of a couple other folks that would certainly be in a very unique type of position that would be very difficult to replace should they decide to leave. And I, I am very aware of how, the way the world operates today, how competitive it is to, to try to compare our structure to the private sector, for example. But I do think it would be worth looking at for the sake of continuity and attractiveness for Pinellas County government, to just take a look at those other specialized, and I mean specialized, I can think of a few of them in my head, that maybe ought to be considered for that level and to just see kind of what we're looking at. How many is what I'm talking about and whether or not it would be worth having a deeper discussion about, about it.
Well, I actually did look at it. The only other one that I said that I would really consider would be the CBB director and again, he's been here, you know, just a short time period. And so that's the only other, like, I think specialized one. Others are general government and so one department head versus another, I mean.
I can think of another one right now sitting here and maybe it's because I've been on that particular board and I also have the history, not anywhere near Commissioner Seal's level, but of going through the exercise when we were trying to replace that position. It was, it was really tough and we ended up changing our, the whole way in which we operate as a result of it. And so now it would be even more complicated to try to bring a new person in. And I'll talk with you, with you when we, when we chat. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I think Barry, to your, to your point, to me, what matters, I mean, I appreciate the fact that he's been here a while, but what matters to me is what the industry is providing, whether it's salary and/or this retirement classification. Because at the end of the day, if we don't do, again, maybe it's not even at that level, but somewhere close to that level, we have turnover. And then we go out to recruit and that's what we're going to be recruiting in, into that industry. And so the, to the extent that we want to have that independent operating group, the airport, I think it's important that we respond accordingly, that's all. So I appreciate how long he's been here versus maybe somebody else, but for me, it's more about a competitive thing.
It, it really was a competitiveness issue and other airport directors do, are in that senior management class and, and the ones that I saw actually end up making more also. And so it's a competitive field. There's no question that if we went out and replaced that from someone outside the organization, we would end up paying more.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Gerard?
Well, again, I, nothing against Tom. I think I, I would like to see this particular position elevated. I just would like us to look at the other ones that may be considered, and not with a, with a notion to upgrade everybody's position, but to look at what, what are the, what are the criteria that we're going to use when and if it happens, you know, to determine whether somebody is in a senior class or not. So we can just bring it back to a work session at some point and talk about that. I don't want to.
We could do that.
Well, didn't really want to start this discussion in the first place, but, but I understand and would be good for us to have some comparison to how other counties classify those or what in the state system.
Okay.
So that's all.
Any other, any other comments? Okay, so do I have a motion? Commissioner Long on the motion. Commissioner Peters on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries six to one. Okay, moving on to item 36, under economic development.
This is employment safety program funding approval for what we previously discussed. This is up to $275,000 for the, the SCIF that was previously presented to you.
Any questions? Motion by Commissioner Justice, second by Commissioner Flowers. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to one. Under human services, item 38.
Oh, 37.
Excuse me. Oh, sorry about that. Under emergency management, item 37.
It's a resolution adopting the county's 2021 comprehensive emergency management plan.
Any questions? Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, onto human services, we have three, item 38.
This is continuation agreement with 211 Tampa Bay Cares for the administration of our adult emergency financial assistance program.
And this did go out to bid, right? And this was the sole, sole, sole bidder? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 39.
This is a grant award for the substance abuse and mental health services administration for the first responders comprehensive addiction and recovery act grant for basically $500,000 per year. There's no match or cost sharing.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Long. Any questions on this item? And we'll obviously get all the word out on this service soon, if possible. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 40.
This is the Pinellas County Health, Health Program Hospital Provider Agreements. This is a second option renewal and amendment with Tarbent Rees Hospital Foundation, Advent Health, Bay Care, OHI West, which is bayfront. And this is, and this is our, basically our blue card program.
For, for, for people who might be watching, what is this?
Okay, so I'll let Karen come up and explain it in greater detail because if I get into that, I'll mess something up.
Morning Karen, welcome.
Good morning, Karen Yacho, Human Services Director. So these agreements, the $3 million is our hospital split for the three hospitals that participate with the health, healthcare for the homeless and the Pinellas County Health Program. So this is for clients who access hospital services that are eligible for our program as well. So our program covers primary care, dental care, specialty care, behavioral health services for those experiencing homelessness and those that are up to 100% of the federal poverty limit.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Seal?
I do find it interesting that this amount of money has not increased for many years to have the hospitals ask for more relief because basically they're going to have to take anybody who comes through the door and we'll reimburse them probably up to a certain extent and then they have to continue to take, take them anyway. So have we asked for how much in reality they're subsidizing our program?
I don't know that we've asked specifically because they're, what, the charity care that they're providing is much larger than the clients that we're serving. So we do meet with them quarterly. I don't know that we've had that ask, but I would imagine that there, the amount of charity care they're providing is much larger than the $3 million split that we contribute.
I just thought I'd see if there had been any movement on their part to ask for more subsidy from the county.
Not, not today, not in our meetings today.
And I can't imagine that they would be shy about it, so.
Exactly, but I just thought I'd ask.
Thanks. Okay, any other, any other questions under this item? Thank you, Karen. Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, under management and budget, item 41.
This is a resolution amending the countywide donated funds policy to, this is actually, needs to be adjusted because of a change with GASME, the Governmental County Standards Board. So it increases the threshold and this is money that we're receiving from $500 to $1,000 for, for reporting requirements.
Okay. Any questions for Barry? Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public works.
And this is an agreement with Team Salvage and a DBA, Cycle Springs Powersports to resolve a dispute regarding an obstructive sewer, or stormwater pipe and a county drain easement. I think you were briefed on this, so they had a presentation, but it allows for, basically we're going to be rerouting a pipe that was, where a building was put over it. And so this resolves the dispute and Brandon's here to answer any questions you have regarding this.
Does anybody have any questions that would like, Commissioner Seal, Brandon, come forward just in case. Go ahead.
So the, the Cycle Springs alleged that we overlooked the easement in permitting the building. Would you agree with that?
That's correct, Commissioner. Brendan Macacy, Assistant County Attorney. What happened here is the building was constructed exactly where it was permitted to be built. That is Cycle Springs' primary argument. Because a repair permit was issued for the building, perhaps in error, it did not go through full site plan review, in which case the drain easement would have been flat. Obviously, we still have a private building over a county drain easement, but their primary defense again would be that, you know, the building was constructed exactly where it's permitted to be.
But you just said it was a repair versus a brand, did they build a brand new building?
They did. The building burned down and typically when the building's footprint is not changing, all the building department issues is a repair permit. Here, however, the building's footprint expanded slightly and that's all it took to go over the easement. So a repair permit was issued in error.
Have we figured out a way to rectify this in other situations going forward, I hope?
That's my understanding, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything on your end, Barry? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I will add that counsel for Cycle Springs is here as well, Katie Cole.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Did I, did I already get a motion on this? No, I need a motion. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 43.
This is a first funding agreement, or first amendment to a grant funding agreement with Florida Department of Environmental Protection. This is for red tide reimbursement. This is the agreement, we previously did a budget amendment to account for that cost.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Justice, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to utilities, item 44.
And this is a change order number one with Garnary Companies for a modification to design-build services. This actually changes a couple of things, but it really combines down three projects into one. And so they're asking for this change order, that's $2.2 million of the contract. Some of that is offset by what an additional contract would have covered that they now want to incorporate within this agreement.
Any questions? Barry, this is a large project, right? Is this, I mean, we, we've had significant increase in our, I think it's in our waste fees, our wastewater fees. These are some of the reasons, right? I mean, some of our high capital requirements that we're, we're looking, because those are enterprise funds, they're self-contained and they have to, between rates, rates have to cover operating, rates have to cover capital.
That's correct. And, and this is a, this is a large project. Kelly could certainly show you how this flows, but in essence, they're, rather, they had it, they were going to work on this project and later on they were going to do a different piece and they're combining that down is the reason for this change order. But Kelly, I mean, I'm sorry, Megan's here to be able to answer any, any of those specific questions.
Yeah.
They could even show you a map in terms of what the project is.
Commissioner Peters?
The increase in cost, is there an increase in cost by doing that?
Go ahead, Megan.
Hi, Megan Ross, Director of Utilities. I'm sorry, could you, Commissioner Peters, could you repeat that?
I said, is there an increase in cost by doing that?
Is there an increase in cost?
By combining them and what you're doing?
So, so this change order reflects two separate things that are going on and three projects, as Barry mentioned. So we have two separate construction, pretty large construction projects going on right now that meet the board's strategic initiatives at increasing capacity and resiliency of our wastewater systems. One is the grit headworks project, which is what you see on the agenda today, which is under construction with Garni. And that is at our South Cross Bayou facility. The second ongoing project is an upgrade of a force main, a brand new force main getting installed from our major pump station 16, lift station, largest lift station in the county. And it actually connects and ties in to this grit headworks facility. Those two projects are ongoing simultaneously by two different contractors right now. Originally, the scope of work was to have the contractor completing the force main project to complete the actual tie-in to the grit headworks facility. After further review and just the timing of the two projects, we decided it would be better to take that portion of work away from that contractor and transfer it to the grit headworks contractor to complete that force main. So that represents a portion of this change order is transferring from one contractor to this contractor. The second part of the change order represents actual increase of that last segment of the force main, the last 250 feet of that force main that is within the facility. We're going to be increasing that from 36 inches to 42 inches. And the reason is to tie in a future force main that will, we are currently planning on designing that will connect our Pinellas Park. connect our Pinellas Park interceptor into the facility, and that will reduce a repetitive SSO that occurs at that location on Belcher Road. So a couple of different things being considered. We're really planning for the future, increase in capacity with the ultimate goal to reduce SSOs and increase resiliency in our system.
Okay, so I didn't hear, is that an increase in cost, or is it the same?
Yeah, so the increase is the change order, the 2.2 million. We will then be reducing the scope of the force main contract by about 600,000, so that will reduce, that will be shown in a reduction of that scope when we close out that project.
Okay. So I'm a big supporter of all the work that you're doing over there and even more, and so I guess my question is, we're raising rates, I mean, is there, is there any way that the Recovery Act money could be used on this, even on our stormwater stuff and the stuff that you're working on? You know, and, you know, I'm just curious, and even if we could expedite even more quicker the work that you need to do, if we've got that Recovery Act, we could do a couple of things, and we could do it, maybe not even raise the rates as high as we're raising them and give the people a break, but I think that money maybe we ought to consider going through that. Last we heard, you didn't have a plan for that money anyways.
Well, we do. We're evaluating each one of the options, which is taking some time. A lot of those are stormwater, I mean sewer and water projects, and so we will be bringing that plan to you shortly, or those thoughts and ideas, and we, and you're exactly right, we can use money for sewer and water repairs. This was a current project that they were already working on, and so we're, we're looking at it, but for other projects that they have within that capital projects rate structure.
Okay. And I got a question off topic, if that's okay, since Megan's here.
Sure. Go ahead.
So the BioClean that we're doing at Sunstar, is that, that a project that you were involved in with the BioClean that cleans out the stormwater, and there's like a sponge in there that cleans out, so it's an affluent water that comes out before it gets released into the bay or into the natural environment?
I'm not involved in that.
You're not involved in that?
Is that a stormwater?
It's a stormwater.
Yeah.
Yes, and it cleans out the stormwater before the water gets released anywhere. There's a thing that's within the pipe, and it's a, it's a pilot that's being done over at Sunstar, so I assume that the county was involved in that.
That, that might be something Public Works is involved in with the stormwater aspect of that, but I'm not familiar with that pilot.
Okay. Because I don't know if we're looking at that long-term, because the legislature is passing laws about our stormwater and what's going to have to happen with our stormwater, and I think if we look to get ahead of that game before we incur an unfunded mandate that we're going to get, and it's going to be a big one, you know, I think that's something that we ought to think about and look at. I don't know where you are in your plan, but I think getting ahead of the game on something that I do believe is going to be an unfunded mandate might be worth looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, any other comments or questions? Yeah, there are going to be a lot of that discussion coming up with the ARPA funds and how.
When are we bringing that back? Kevin? Don't have a date yet? Okay. We're, it is shortly, and I know they've been working very hard, and we gave you that original presentation to narrow down the projects, and then we'll bring those back for discussion.
Okay. Any other questions on this item forty-four? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did I do a motion?
No, you did not, Mr. Chair.
I, I should have asked that before I said that. Any, I'd have a motion for this. Commissioner Gerard on the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Under Authorities, Boards, Constitutional Officers and Counsel, first we go to career source Pinellas.
We have approval of Elizabeth Siplin.
Okay. Who made the motion? I'm sorry. Oh, Commissioner Seal and the second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under Educational Facilities Authority.
I would also recommend a voice vote on this. We have two applicants that are reappointments, Diana Sylvie Area and Grace Smith, and there's only the two on there.
So we have two for two?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion for that, please? Motion by Commissioner Gerard. Second by Commissioner Seal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item forty-seven.
This is a resolution of issuance for an educational facility revenue bond. It increases it from $9 million to 9.2.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Long. Second by Commissioner Gerard. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item forty-eight, under County Attorney Reports.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up to the discussion that we had at the Agenda Review last week. I know that we were joined at that time by Amanda Coffey from my office, who was able to give you all an update on the meeting of the Redistricting Board that had just happened the evening prior to your work session. What I wanted to follow up on were some upcoming dates, just to make everyone aware. So what we have coming up here very soon are the community discussions that will be held virtually. Those are going to take place on October 13th, 14th, 20th, and the 21st. They should be getting posted on the county calendar soon. They're at various times of the day to try to accommodate folks, so again, those various dates, and they will be held at different times of the day, all being done virtually. So the next and final meetings of the Redistricting Board will be on October 27th and November the 3rd. So the recommendations from that board will be coming to the County Commission initially at your November 9th meeting. We did have a discussion last week about scheduling a work session to give you all an opportunity to have a lengthier discussion about the proposals, should you so desire, that would take place on December the 2nd. We are still trying to coordinate with our consultant, just to make sure that we can have him available for that time. He's out of Tallahassee. I did forward that date to him and request that we would, you know, want to have him virtually, not necessarily have him come all the way down here to Pinellas, but that would be for your work session on December the 2nd, and then the anticipated date for the County Commission to adopt, to adopt your districts is December the 7th.
Okay. On the 13th and 14th, which is tomorrow and Thursday, what are the times? Do we know the times for that community input? And is that all virtual?
My understanding is that it's all virtual.
Two o'clock on Wednesday? Six o'clock on Thursday? Okay. And that is a virtual attendance?
Correct.
Presentations will be made, questions, input?
I don't know the extent to which there's a presentation planned, but I do know that they're planned virtually and that the public should be able to find the information to access those meetings on our website.
And the topics of that, those meetings are on the website?
That, that's really an opportunity for the public to give input on their thoughts on the districts and, you know, population shifts and what the maps might look like.
Okay, all right. So that's tomorrow at two o'clock in the afternoon, and then Thursday at six o'clock, and then, of course, two dates next week as well, on Wednesday and Thursday, so please get online and check those times, but tomorrow and Thursday, two o'clock and six o'clock. All right. Commissioner Flowers?
While the public can give their thoughts on the redistricting process, the process still needs to be followed as it relates to the number of residents in any given district, precincts, et cetera, so, and I just want to make sure that the residents understand that they may come up with something, but if it doesn't fall in line with that which is lawful, it's something that can't be done, so.
That's correct. The whole, of course, point of looking at population data every 10 years is to ensure that your four single-member districts remain roughly proportional in population size, and your three-at-large districts remain roughly proportional. This board in the past has always adopted plus or minus 3% as your definition, basically of rough proportionality, and that is sanctioned by case law, but yes, you are absolutely correct. The four single-member districts need to be roughly the same size as do the three-at-large, and that is something that you are confined by as part of the general law related to redistricting when this board ultimately approves districts.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just wanted to follow up with if you all have had or continually think about what the process will be for us to be, have access to staff to do our own map making as well?
We are working on that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the idea will be that it'll be kind of introduced to us on the first meet, or the only meeting in November. We'll have the workshop to get into it more if we need to, and then we'll come back for a final look at it on the only meeting in December. So that's kind, did you have something? Go ahead.
And that's, the timeline is what I'm a little concerned about as far as, and I watched a little bit of the, one of the first meetings, I guess, and some of the members of the board said, well, what about, we want to move a line here or there? And how quickly the consultant can come back with that, what that looks like and how it, how it divvies up population-wise and all those other things, that's my concern, is if we see something on the second, and we go, what if we want to move this line over here for, you know, for all the conditions, whether it's, you know, communities of interest or municipal boundaries, or all the things that are in our, our parameters, how long will it take the consultant to come back with going, I moved the line, that's great, but it takes me X hours, days to figure out the population shifts?
Yeah. I think, well, and again, I don't want to, I think we're hoping that it's interactive at our workshops. I mean, that's the idea, that we, otherwise, the timeframe, as you say, gets really tight. You don't want to give them direction, and he goes back for two weeks and then comes back again. We don't, we don't have that kind of time, so. And, you know, with a compressed timeframe that we have here, it just, it makes all the changes a little bit more challenging in this particular year. Commissioner Seal?
So for clarity, so the Redistricting Board's recommendations and the maps will be presented to us on November 9th?
Correct, at your meeting on November the 9th.
So we will have a full presentation at that point in time.
The maps are going to be presented. I suspect you're going to hear a presentation on how they got to the point that they did as far as the map or maps, you know, that may be coming forward.
But we're going to have complete information at the 9th.
Well, they're, they're finishing their work on the, in October.
Right.
So I would, I mean, we're not, I would presume that we're going to have a full presentation on what those recommendations are going to be at that meeting in November.
Thank you.
So we'd be able to talk through things. I don't know, again, that on-the-fly kind of response to maybe moving things just a little bit here and there, how that, how that interactive process is going to work yet. Our hope is that it works so that we can do some what-ifs if we have that kind of conversation, but the idea from my perspective is that we get a full presentation then, and then maybe there are some questions that he needs to do some work on. We're going to have a workshop on the 2nd of December and get all of it out, hopefully, and then bring it back for the commission meeting. The only commission meeting we have in December for the decision. So hopefully, we'll have three looks at it, and hopefully, that'll be enough to make any changes that we want to do. We'll see.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else, Jewel? Okay. All right. Thank you. County Administrator, Barry?
I have a couple of updates for you. First, on positive news for our COVID update is that we continue to see positive numbers. Our most recent 78% positivity was at 5.2%, so this is a significant increase. To give you a frame of reference, it was 11.8% on September 21st.
Significant improvement.
Say again?
Significant improvement.
Significant improvement.
I thought you said increase. I said, sorry.
So it's, it's a significant improvement. We continue to see them go down. We're at 133 new cases a day. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were at 438 cases a day, and so, again, we're seeing that downward trend. This is a lagging indicator. Now, we're seeing our hospitalization, admissions improve, and so percent beds used in seven days was at 7.818%. It's down 3% from the previous week. So I could go through all the different, you know, indicators and stuff, but we're seeing positive news. What we're also seeing positive news is on the number of fire rescue transports, and I'm sure you've all heard, you know, about the concerns and impacts that's had, so that's both an improvement in the way Sunstar's performing with the hospitals, and also then that frees up obviously our fires departments. So, you know, those are all good. We've provided 10,000 to 14,000 boosters over the last two weeks, per week, so that still remains strong. If we look at our percent vaccinated, so right now, for percent population 12 years and older, we're fully vaccinated 64%, and one shot 72, 18 and older, fully vaccinated 66%, and one shot 73.9%. So we continue to do a lot of tests, but it's, again, we're seeing that decrease also as, as the, as the numbers go down. We still have our mid-county testing site open, and, and they're continuing to work and do that. They also provide it through the Healthy, Center for Healthy St. Pete and our Community Health Centers. Happy to answer any questions, but that's just a brief update.
Any questions on the COVID update? Okay. Go ahead.
I understand that somebody asked about the Rays. Wanted a quick update on the Rays. So as you know, you approved a contract for us to enter into a contract with a consultant that would assist us in talking with the Rays, so the mayor and I have had several discussions with the Rays regarding their ideas of a new site, a new stadium, and we continue to have those discussions. We're getting into more of the financial information and what that would look like, and looking at economic impact and what that ask is and what the potential revenue sources are, so we're making progress. It's a, the real message for today, because, you know, until we have something that I can present out that we all agree on, I really don't have much to report, but it's positive conversations, I think, between the Rays, the mayor, myself, representing you, we've, we've had very fruitful discussions. So hopefully, you know, this will come to light, and we can, we can bring something out more publicly at a later point. I know there's been some reports about other locations. You know, my focus is on what the proposal is, whether it's reasonable, and what the financial package would look like, and so we're staying focused on that, and so we'll certainly continue to work on that and bring you something when we have something more meaningful.
Commissioner Long?
Barry, welcome back.
Thank you.
Microphone? Microphone? No, hers.
I said, welcome back. It's nice to have you back. I, I'm curious about whether or not there is a timeframe to complete the financial piece, which I think is one of the things that's always been on the back burner.
Right.
I'd like to think that we're going to bring that to some closure in the near future.
I would like to also, we're working, and the consultant is working, you know, with the Rays. Our consultant contracts for four months, so, you know, at some point, you know, we've got, we're about two months in on that, so, you know, at some point here soon, we've got to bring it to a head or come back to you and request an extension or something, but, you know, we're seeing what progress we can make. We're really getting down to some, you know, very detailed ideas and thoughts, and again, it is, it's very productive, you know, but, you know, you don't have something to report until you have something that, you know, you can report, and we all agreed that we would work, you know, jointly, we wouldn't make anything outward or go back and forth. It's not about, about comparing it to anything else. It's about whether a proposal makes sense for our community and what that financial structure would look like, and so we've had some very good productive discussions, and hopefully, within the next couple of months, I'll have more to report.
Thank you.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And now, I wanted to hear about the consultant part, because, and I know quotes get processed on the news or in social media, and they're not current quotes, and, and I read a quote from the mayor the other day that sounded like the consultant really hadn't started yet, and that's why I wanted to ask for the update, to make sure that, and now that I know we're two months in on a four-month, that, that really was the main question I wanted.
Yeah, we've, we've had, in fact, right before, you know, I took a week off, and right before that, we, we spent a half a day all together with the mayor and the Rays and us. and us, really going through, you know, detailed discussions with our consultant on-site.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's an interesting conversation that you all are having in those meetings, and then, of course, we're reading about everything else that's happening in the paper, so we'll look forward to.
I've tried to address that. I hope that we can not make so many public statements, you know, and that really was, you know, people briefing and talking about land deals and things like that, and really wasn't, you know, the RACE or anybody else. But again, regardless of any of it, we got to, what you're going to be asked is whether it makes sense and what, what the proposal is. And the whole reason we hired the consultants to where we can actually talk about details versus throwing stuff back and forth absent all the information you need to make a good decision. That's the type of detail we're trying to work through right now.
Yeah, I think we can't, we can't do anything without that qualitative analysis that you're talking about. And this, this consultant that we have has had experience not only in development, as financing, and is in connection with the folks that would be funding and financing. So I think we have the right person there, kind of translating the language, which is extremely difficult.
Yeah, he's put together over 50 stadium deals and has a tremendous amount of experience working with local governments.
So you have to have that piece, or there's going to be a lot of other kinds of conversation at some point, too. So, okay, anything else, Barry?
Yeah, you, I also have Cynthia Johnson here. You wanted an update on, for ARC, and also Millen Booth Road closure, and I think Kelly was going to give you, oh, and Jill's going to give you an update on that.
Okay. Welcome, Cynthia. Good to have you.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Cynthia Johnson, Director of Economic Development, and I'm just going to give you all a quick update on the ARC Invest Management relocation to Pinellas County in our wonderful city of St. Petersburg, and the naming rights for the ARC Innovation Center. As you all are aware, last week, we made a big announcement that our team had been working on the relocation for ARC to come to the Tampa Bay area. It was between St. Pete and Tampa. Last week, they made their decision to come to St. Petersburg. So when they came to St. Petersburg, we had a great opportunity for our incubator. And so as my team worked with the relocation, ARC met with the Tampa Innovation Center and Tanya at StarTech separately to discuss naming rights for the incubator. This win for Pinellas County is really huge. It is going to create opportunities for our businesses to grow. Right now, we're in the phase of helping them relocate all of their headquarters to St. Petersburg. They will be located downtown St. Pete. But Commissioner Eggers, when I spoke to him, and he, he said that the ARC Innovation coming to Pinellas County is going to be a game changer, and it is going to be a game changer for us. It's going to attract more innovation, it's going to attract more highways, jobs, it's going to attract more investment to Pinellas County. And through this process, as we help them with their headquarters, we partner with Tanya, and Tanya is here today. Tanya, you could come on up. And so as we have, Tanya is the operator for the county-owned incubator. And so as we contracted with Tanya to be our operator, part of the agreement of her working with us as the operator was giving her the autonomy to find a sponsor for naming rights for the incubator. And hence, she was able to secure $2 million for the naming rights of the incubator, now known as the ARC Innovation Center. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Tanya's hard work. She has, me and her have been on the phone many nights, many mornings, but she has worked really hard to secure the incubator's sponsorship for the naming rights. Right now, what we are with the incubator is, we have completed the design phase, so we're moved on to Phase 2. So we're in the construction phase right now. We are waiting for the EDA to sign off on some of the latest checklist that we have for the bid. Once the EDA does that, and then we'll continue the construction process. So we're hoping, and we're looking forward to actually starting to construct the building in 2022, maybe in the first quarter. So I'm going to ask Tanya to come up and just address the operations. As the county is the owner of the building, we have contracted with Tanya to be the operator of the facility.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank each of you for your commitment to the Tampa Bay Innovation Center incubator. My team and I truly appreciate your understanding and support regarding the process. You know, as Barry, our county administrator, alluded to earlier, you can't report what you yet can't report, so it's along those lines. So we continue to believe this project is going to provide a beneficial impact to our community for decades, as well as the partnership and collaboration between ARC Investment Management and the Tampa Bay Innovation Center. Now with ARC Investment not only naming the building, ARC Innovation Center, but relocating their headquarters here, and their Innovation Foundation Group is moved here as well. And so we realize that this impact will be even larger, but ARC itself believes this impact and collaboration will be about five times larger than we originally invested and calculated. And this is because ARC is a collaborator. They intend to partner and look for opportunities in the region to host events and to do further research collaborations for their local academic institutions. So it is really an opportunity for the Innovation Center, and it came down to Tampa-St. Pete, as Dr. Johnson had noted. And because of the Innovation Center and the opportunity to work with the incubator, it kind of helped seal the deal, along with other, many other community members in Pinellas County. So it was just one piece of the puzzle that made this deal work well for us. Just so you're aware, ARC is really on, looking at five innovation platforms: artificial intelligence, robotics, blockchain technology, genomics, and energy storage. And where this collaborates with what we do at the Innovation Center, we are looking for other partners that are wanting to move forward startups and technologies in these arenas that cross sectors. So for example, AI, energy storage is big in autonomous vehicles. And so that's one initiative that we can look at putting an accelerator around. Also, financial transactions is big for our region, for Pinellas County, and it's also another opportunity for us. I will leave you with one thing, one of the hundreds of congratulations we got at the Innovation Center and for our community on this landing of ARC Investment Management and Kathy Wood herself. If you're not familiar with Kathy Wood, she is really an icon in the investment arena. And so she has been well-known since 2014 in Wall Street, New York, and beyond our borders here. But the one comment that got my attention most was from a local venture capitalist. And he said, what this, this project is a major one for Pinellas County, the region, but it may very well be the most significant project of this generation, meaning innovation-led economy. And I just would like to answer any questions that you have regarding the project, and we're very excited to be able to finally bring it to you. It took four months getting here, but we kind of got what we needed to get done.
Thank you. Commissioner Seal?
Well, first of all, mostly, congratulations. It's very exciting news. So I do believe that this will be an unbelievable anchor and disruptive technology.
Yes.
There was a clip in our email box, and it shows that we're seeking $3.8 million to fund the Innovation Center. Could you explain more about that, please?
The $3.8 million that we have requested from the EDA was a result of the construction costs coming back way higher than we anticipated. We put it out at $12 million. It came back at like $15.8 million. And so we made that initial request to the EDA.
Do you think that we have an opportunity to receive that money? Do we have a clue?
We are anticipating the EDA to call us this week. We have, we made the request on the 27th of September, and we do a weekly call to them to try to encourage a response, but we have not heard back yet.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, let me add my congratulations, but I know it's a long time coming. Just a nuts and bolts thing, because I talked with Tanya and your board a couple of weeks back, and, well, ARC will have a presence in the Innovation Center, but I also thought that they will, is it their headquarters that will be at the Barnett Tower? Is that?
Yes, their headquarters would be at the Barnett Tower on Second Downtown St. Pete. They will have presence at the Innovation Center. They will have their foundation there, and they will also have an office there as well. So they will have presence at the Innovation Center, and their headquarters will be downtown St. Pete.
And I don't, I forget the name of the building. I, I'm dating myself by still calling it the Barnett Tower.
I'm from St. Pete. It's still Barnett Tower to me, Commissioner.
Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say thank you to the team and congratulations. I know my questions were fast, furious, and rough, but, but that was just because of the intensity of the project and just where the project is being located and making sure that people are invited to even hear and know about what's going on. Sometimes persons can't take advantage because they're not aware. So I also want to thank you all for partnering with me for October 28th to have a community update session, if you will, at the Enock Davis Center. I've gotten quite a bit of positive feedback for attendance on that, so persons will have a chance to hear about the project, partners, partnerships, opportunities, and all of that. And it's wonderful, because there will be this Innovation Center here on the east side of town, and there is a proposal for an Innovation Center on the west side of town, on 22nd Street. So it will be really wonderful to have these anchors around the community so that persons can see the advantages and the focus and direction for the future, which is genomics, which is AI, which certainly is blockchain. We see that growing. I think the governor even put a board, a commission together on blockchain. And so I'm really grateful for that and for the opportunity. And again, don't want you to think I'm the meanest person in the world. It's just that I wanted to make sure that things were, were moving and moving in the right direction and information getting out to the community, because there are so many people that want to take advantage of services. They just need to know how to plug in. And so I'm looking forward to that venture on the 28th. And hopefully, if Ms. Kathy Wood plays a, pays a visit to the area, we can have a little meet and greet with her, just to, you know, thank her for investing in our community, both for now and for the future. So thank you all very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And it is our desire to continue to support Ms. Woods as we do with all of our businesses as they relocate to our community. And we will be having that meet and greet opportunity as things kind of settle down a little bit. But I just wanted to just reiterate the fact of what's going on in Pinellas County. That incubator is really positioning us to be the innovation hub of the US. We, we are getting so many calls. I mean, my phone is blowing up. We are getting so many calls. We are getting so many leads that are coming our way because we are bringing this innovation. And I'll just mention that on tomorrow, I'll be talking with the City of St. Pete. The Innovation District is also creating some innovation hub around innovation. So we really are trying to build the innovation cluster in Pinellas County. And as we build this cluster, we'll definitely keep you all informed. And I cannot express our appreciation for the support that economic development receives from the commission, and thank you. And I look forward to being there on the 28th, ready to answer the questions for the community, because we're going to make sure that they're involved. This is an incubator for all. We're all going to be a part of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, and I don't know where Tanya went, but I just, I couldn't help while you were standing there but reflect on where we were two decades ago and where we are today, and how interesting and, you could never anticipate back then what you'd be doing today, and I'm so proud of you. And I'm very excited about this new opportunity, and I'm hopeful that maybe there are other opportunities for us to highlight this new opportunity in a bigger, broader way, because I remember, it wasn't all that long ago, that all the innovation and advances in technology were coming from Silicon Valley. Now I see. Here we are, you know, taking their place almost in, in the United States, and I couldn't be more excited about that. So I'm looking forward to our update, Tanya. I think it's next week. And Carry On, it's just an incredible opportunity. In any way in which we can highlight it, I think we would be remiss not to do so. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gerard?
Well, I just wanted to add my congratulations, and this is very exciting for our community. You know, we've been trying to attract clean industry for a very long time, and this is quite the coup. It'll be exciting, even if I don't understand what they're doing. I still don't get blockchain. I know you described it to me, but I don't know what that means, and probably never will. But yeah, it's really exciting.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask, and I don't know the answer to this, but several years ago, you'll remember, Commissioner Seal, we did a summit, an economic development summit, over at the Bill Young Conference Center College. And I'm just wondering if now, with this great success, it might not be an opportunity for us to do a piece of that again, just for an update, because we have certainly turned the corner in terms of where our focus is. And maybe that's something we should be thinking about, really taking a look at globally. I remember so well that gentleman talking about how he did a comparison about how much time and effort we put on the TDC, not that I'm minimizing that by any means, when really and truly, what will get us to where we need to be for the future is the kind of thing that you two are doing right now. And I just think it could be so exciting to hear how, how we have morphed from what we were doing then to what we're doing today. It's incredibly aspirational.
Commissioner, we can kind of look at that. Remember, we're looking at all of our economic development strategies right now, and so that's something we can consider as we kind of move forward on, on some of those regional strategies.
Thank you. I think it would be very worthwhile. Just my thought.
Yeah, and again, I want to add my congratulations as well. I think some of the things that we're talking about up here, I think, you know, that bigger picture on economic development, what our role here is on so many different levels will be important. It also, maybe at some point, Barry, and I don't know if we have it on the workshop agenda, I don't remember, this topic as to the financial makeup of this project, you know, maybe we can get a summary on that. I know we've looked at it before, the shortfalls and where this comes in. And then also maybe the vision that you might have on those, the floor construction, on who's going to be there and what their, what their role will be. Because I still keep going back to the statement, I don't know why it still strikes me, that jobs that our kindergartners will be having in decades ahead aren't even there yet, and they're, they're going to be coming from efforts like this. So, so to your point, Commissioner Gerard, not understanding what these jobs, I agree with you. It's like, I don't know what they're going to end up being, but it's fascinating. I think it's part of that fabric of economic development that, that we're going to be playing a key role in. So, but I'd like to just maybe understand the vision of this building, what's going in there, what floors, what do you have on each floor, kind of thought, it's early, I know that, but still. And then maybe that financial picture and the, and the gaps and how we're filling it with this naming rights, et cetera, so.
Sure. And that, hearing back on that grant is a key piece of that financial picture. So we'll wait a week and give you an update and, okay?
But yeah, we'll see if we can get it on a workshop, once we get all that together. Okay, anything, anything else on that? Thank you, both of you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
And then I'll ask Jill to come up, and she can update you on Millen Booth Road.
Thank you. Jill Silverboard, Deputy County Administrator. So the City of Clearwater's repair of the sewer pipe is in progress. So it did start. We had indicated in our email to you that we hoped to start yesterday. We are now working with the city and their contractor to schedule the road restoration that'll follow the sewer repair, and we hope to have, the goal is to have that done this week.
All of that this week? That's the goal?
That's the goal.
Okay. Okay.
Very clearly using the word "goal."
Yeah, thank you, Jill, appreciate that.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay. Thanks, Barry. Any others? Okay. Now move on to item 50, appointments to the Historic Preservation Board.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this item will require two votes by the Board of County Commissioners. The first part of it is an appointment of Ms. Ramona Pletcher by Commissioner Peters. This is to fill a current position on the Historic Preservation Board. I'd recommend a voice vote for that. And then the second is to fill an alternate position, and I have ballots for the second vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of Ramona Pletcher as Commissioner Peters' representative?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, what do we have? We have one of the three that's on the ballot? Is that, we have three on the ballot?
We do have three names on the ballot. It's Gene Corey, Corey Gibbons Jr., and Allison Dolan. And I do have ballots, if you'd like me to pass them around.
Okay, that's fine. I'm looking under the comments about, they're eligible, but they don't meet, and I don't know if there's a, resume does not meet preservation, I don't know what that means. And under the comments on that page, anyway, there's two folks here that says a resume does not meet preservation guidelines, so I just, Commissioner Justice.
And I don't think it's necessary for this position to meet those guidelines. We have, on the board, we're supposed to have, to maintain our certification, we need to have someone who's with archaeological background and someone who is with an architect. Commissioner Flowers' appointment is a Historic Preservation Architect. We have some other folks that meet the other guideline. So I don't think, and I could be corrected, but I don't think these folks need to meet those particular guidelines.
So all of them?
It's just a kind of a...
Okay, that's kind of what I was looking for. So we have the ballots that we can fill out. Commissioner Peters?
According to the worksheet, Allison Dolan, her resume meets preservation professional guidelines.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Yeah, we have two that don't, and then one, you're right, that does.
You're right, I'm sorry, I was just saying the position does not need to for the alternate position. And most of us know Ms. Dolan from her work in Clearwater.
Charlie, can I borrow your pen? Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it.
And, Mr. Chair, for this item, it does appear that all of the commissioners have voted for Ms. Allison Dolan.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, so that is our appointment, let me get back to the page, that's our appointment to the Historic Preservation Board as a whole. Item 51, please.
And then, Mr. Chair, I do have ballots for this as well. This is an appointment to the Parks and Conservation Resources Advisory Board. It's one environmental science policy appointment to fill an existing vacancy. There were four applicants, although one, Robert Rose Jr., is not eligible.
Okay, and then there are some comments in here also under the, in the work package, so, okay.
Can I pick any one?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so by a majority vote, so one individual did receive four votes, Miles Kroom.
Okay, so that is our appointment to the Parks and Conservation Resources. Thank you for that. Anything else? Kat, are we?
That is it, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 52, new business, anything from the commission? Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. I wanted to ask the commissioners if you would do as you did last year and waive the rules for the appointment for the Yak member to be on the park board as a liaison. As you know, the board only meets a couple of times a year, and the students at their next Yak meeting will elect that person. But if we wait to come back to the next board meeting, they'll miss one of the very few meetings, they'd only have like one meeting left for the year to meet. So last year you waived it so that when the students elected that person, they can just immediately go to that meeting, and I'm hoping that you would waive the rules for that again like you did last year.
Thank you, good request. Do I have a motion for that? Yes, Commissioner Long.
Commissioner Peters, do we have a candidate?
They have their elections, they do have a candidate, and they, it doesn't, they do their elections at their meeting, and then once they elect the person, then they typically, in the past, have come here. But since I've been on Yak, we've always waived the rules because there's only a couple of meetings that they could, because it's only during the school year, and so there's only a couple of meetings a year that they can attend, and the way the school and the committee getting together, it would omit a meeting for them to be able to attend if we don't waive the rules.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion for that waiver? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Flowers. Second from Commissioner Gerard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Commissioner Flowers?
Just want to say thank you so much to staff. I sent a email, I think, to everybody, but The Baskets on Beaches is out on Fort DeSoto. I submitted an idea that I saw, excuse me, that would hopefully help people pick up their trash after themselves and assist our park rangers in getting rid of it. And so The Baskets on Beaches was put up week before last, and I asked the ranger how did things go that previous weekend? All the baskets were returned. I know that was one of the concerns, was whether or not the baskets would make it back to the pole, but they were returned and people were actually picking up their trash. While I was there, a professor from the School of, the Department of Oceanography was there with their students, and several people were saying they thought that was a really, really good idea. So thank you all so very much, just a little pilot, but it seems like it's going really well, and I really do appreciate that. And for the viewing audience, I just want to say, I hope I'm not causing a big stir, but for the viewing audience, I just want to say that last night there was an event, and apparently someone made a comment that they thought that St. Pete should annex Lealman and Tierra Verde. And I just want to say to the public that that is not a discussion that we have had, because I've gotten a couple of inquiries, like, are you guys talking about that? We have not had that conversation? That was somebody bringing something up? We have nothing to do with that.
I respect Commissioner Flowers.
Huh?
That's not funny.
We did not, we did not have that conversation, so I just wanted to say that for the public, because I've gotten those inquiries, and I don't want us to be kind of put in the twiddle middle of that. So there you have it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Flowers. Anybody else? Commissioner Long?
Yes, I wanted to say, like, a...
Thank you, Commissioner Gerard. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to talk a little bit here, if I may be so bold, is to ask if there is significant support on this commission to support the Clearwater Ferry. I had a conversation with the owners of the Clearwater Ferry, and Brad Miller and myself last week, about the dire circumstances they, what? What? I don't know what you're trying to tell me. Mike?
What?
Nothing, go on.
I don't understand the sign language, but anyways, I hope I'm not, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
They really want to be able to get up and running this coming cycle, and we felt that there was an opportunity to identify a funding source for them, that we can come back at a future date on our agenda or a workshop to discuss it. But what I'm really most interested in is gathering enough support so that we can bring it to our Waterborne Transportation Subcommittee of Forward Pinellas, and we haven't had an opportunity to do that. And I would hate to see them not be able to get up and running. They do provide a service for our workers to get from downtown Clearwater out to Clearwater Beach and further, and so that's my ask. Can we please at least give them an opportunity to gather everybody as a consensus, and we can get some direction from Forward Pinellas as well?
Barry?
Let me just follow up. We were in a position where we were going to ask, put in an application for the federal money for a grant for them, but we have waived that for this year, knowing that Hillsborough is taking the lead on the Cross Bay Ferry, and so we didn't want to have two applications for two different services. But being able to get them up and running and know that we have an ongoing service will help position us next year as well to still apply for the money. So that's pretty much, I just want to know if that, if anybody has a negative about why they wouldn't want to do that.
If I can, Commissioner, it makes it really hard when, because I'm in discussions with them, you know, and it's hard to negotiate multiple angles and multiple people, which seems to be, you know, the path this thing has been going on, because, you know, they, originally, A group, without getting into specifics, A group come and said, you know, well, we want you to give money. I'm like, well, I don't have a program for this purpose, so you just, if we always just find money, well then, I won't be able to manage your budget, you know, I mean, there's just no way possible. So I did sit down with some of the partners, we had discussions about ideas and thoughts that really needed to be fleshed out further, because it was, well, we're part of your county, so you should just fund this. Well, you know, I mean, we don't fund everything cities fund. And so we agreed that we were going to have more discussions, and we were going to look at some different ideas, and I'm actually meeting with some of the partners coming up here. So, you know, I'm happy to get involved in that, but I wouldn't want to make a commitment from, I mean, I would ask commissioners not to make that commitment until I have a chance to review and work with them on a funding proposal, because funding proposals are supposed to come back as part of the budget process. And that's the timeline that we discussed, that we would work on it this fall and be prepared to submit something for your consideration for the '23 budget. And so now, so, I mean, I would ask us for us to follow that process, you know, without, otherwise I can't look at that, because it's not just about Clearwater Ferry, it's about any ferry service. And so I did have that discussion with, but we need a lot more time on staff to be able to work through these proposals.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
I appreciate that, Barry. Number one, you weren't here, you know, and I didn't want to bother you while you were in Seattle. Secondly, I clearly understand the direction that you're trying to go for 2023. The issue becomes if we aren't able to, and I have another funding source that doesn't involve Pinellas County identified, if I can just get an opportunity to do that so that they can continue operating this after the first of the year. If they don't receive additional funds by February, they are not going to be able to operate, and that's the problem. So in the discussions that I have had, the only ask that I'm asking for is that we can all support their effort to move forward, given that all of everything you're talking about works through the process. It's a timing thing. That's all I'm saying. If it's not there, it's not there.
Commissioner Gerard.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think it's a bit premature to ask us to commit, I mean, I'm committed to having Barry continue these discussions. You know, I think we'd all like to see the Clearwater Ferry continue, but we don't want to throw a wrench in his discussions with them.
And I agree.
So I think we have to trust the process.
How about I just talk to you, Barry?
Be fine.
Thank you.
You know, I was asked by the, not this particular group that you're talking about, but by that organization that's involved, PSTA specifically, to apply for a grant for that, for boats this coming year. And so I, you know, we've, I filled out, I signed a letter to that extent. And then after that, because of the direction that we gave to the operator out of Tampa for the Cross Bay Ferry, wanted the same thing. And then I was told that PSTA was taking back their request for this location. And so again, I'm just going to, you know, brought up, so I'm just saying, the way we're doing it with the, with the, this, the way we're doing it right now, the way we're working with our MPO group, Forward Pinellas group, and having a Waterborne Transportation group that talks about tourism benefits, that talks about actual transit benefits, to me is the right way to do it. And we're, and I think that effort that you're talking about, Barry, if, whatever effort we can do to accelerate that, that's great, but I think that is the right way to do it. And I did not like the fact that they took that grant request off in favor of a group that frankly, I don't think has done a very good job of moving the, I guess, the ball forward on that transit service. We've had that conversation, but that's done. So this group is going to be working, moving forward, I hope as quickly as possible, to tell the story and what they're going to need to operate a business, and whatever that business is going to look like. Because I think it's got some real potential for our county versus the other one that, you know, just looks good, in my opinion, at this point. Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I don't, I was surprised to hear that PSTA was pulling their request. Never came to me, I'm the chair of PSTA, I never heard about that before it was already a done deal. So I will have a discussion with Mr.
Thank you.
Miller, I mean, I think that, that's contrary to what, you know...
I just, there wasn't a process, correct?
Well, no, I think there...
That took that back. I mean, there was a real push to get that forward. They took the leadership on doing it. And the other group wouldn't have even done it had it not been for Commissioner Seal pushing them to apply for it.
Right.
So to me, you know, I wanted to reward good behavior, and I thought trying to get their application, albeit they may have had a more difficult time with it, because we don't have our plan put together for this year, but still, anyway.
But can I, can I just defend PSTA for a moment? Because it wasn't, this is what I know, our plan is not baked, and we did not want to compete with Hillsborough in their efforts to get the federal money.
Who's "we"?
Yeah. I don't know who "we" is either.
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
Well, first of all, PSTA was in the process of thinking that we would make an application to the feds.
Yes.
At our, at our last briefing that I had, there was an ask from the City of St. Pete to not compete for a grant for that federal money to maybe confuse... to not compete for a grant for that federal money, to maybe confuse the feds, given that we weren't ready anyway, and let Hillsborough take the lead on the Cross Bay Ferry. Our grant application was going to be for the Clearwater Ferry.
Yes, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I never heard anything about pulling it until it was already pulled.
Oh, well, I, so, just saying.
Yeah, if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
I will, yes.
Commissioner, thank you. Okay, anybody, anybody else? I just had two things real quick. First, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I would like to make an appointment to our Whedon Isle Advisory Group, and Commissioner Justice was the, offered his services at the last meeting, and I haven't heard from the rest of you about, you know, fighting him for that spot. So if I don't hear of any interest, I'm going to ask for, I'm just going to go ahead and appoint him to that advisory group for now. So thank you for agreeing to be on that. Appreciate it. And the only other thing I had, we recognized our county attorney for her years of service last week, but now we get to recognize our county administrator for his years of service. I got a three-year pin. And it literally says, "Three years." Yeah, I think, obviously, we had Barry's review last month, and it was a very good review. It's been an interesting three years, a year and a half of it dealing with all of the pandemic issues, et cetera, but Barry, good to have you on our team, and for many, many, I hope to present many more of those pins down the road, but if you had any comments?
No, I appreciate the support of the commission. I really support, appreciate our staff and all the hard work that they do, and you see that reflected in just a little bit of things, kind of the behind-the-scenes things. Those are just as important as all the things that we talk about here, and so we really do have a good team, and that goes from the commission all the way to all of our employees. Thank you.
Yeah, great comment. And I think, you know, having Carlos Serrone here this morning with his family, that's just one of thousands of people, hundreds, well, I guess up to 3,000, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that work here at Pinellas County on behalf of our residents every day. So again, good to have you on board. Any final comments before we, anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.